Okay, at 6:30, so we'll call the Monday, June 28th City of Mayor Council Meeting to Order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Take us to public comments, if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero, six eight one, street name and address change from Mary Lutheran High.
All right. All right, Mayor Dodge and Council, in front of you this evening is a resolution that approves City Ordinance 232, changing a section of the street currently named 62nd Street Northeast to 7th Street Northeast. With this street name change, the ordinance would also initiate the change of Mary Lutheran High School's address from the current 305 5th Street Northeast to 306 7th Street Northeast. So a little bit of background, over the last few years, there have been concerns expressed by residents about increased traffic on 5th Street Northeast going into Mary Lutheran High. So Mary Lutheran High School has historically had their main entrance to the school off of 5th Street Northeast. In 2015, a roundabout was installed at the intersection of Minnesota State Highway 25 and 7th Street Northwest and 62nd Street Northeast. When those improvements were made, it initiated planned improvements by the school as well as far as making it their new main entrance off of 62nd Street Northeast. So in 2018, if you can remember, the high school did a major expansion that included a remodel of the high school entrance and the addition of a field house. So with that, there have been increased events at the high school, especially on the weekends. So these events have increased traffic on 5th Street from visitors as well as to the north on 62nd Street. So since that time, the school has had the opportunity to host more events and activities. And with the increased traffic, the school has been trying to educate as much as possible residents and visitors, employees and students to use the northern entrance. The school has even contacted Google Maps to make sure that the route through that mapping system guides to that entrance. The school did inquire as to whether the city would be able to change its address to further alleviate concerns of traffic, just to get more visitors off of 5th Street. So upon extensive review, staff did initially determine that it would be complex. The process would, if we changed the entire 62nd Street Northeast to 7th Street, it would trigger involvement with Wacona Township in Carver County because the current street section, 62nd Street, is a township name and there are township properties actually surrounded by city properties in this area as well, which I will show you. So staff determined that it is indeed complex, but that further cooperation would have to take place in the future, but determined that it could be put on hold at this time until future development happens. But at that time, it would have to be addressed. The current and more immediate need right now that we're trying to focus on is changing the street to allow Mary Lutheran High School to have a different address. And so upon further review, staff felt like we were able to come up with a solution to that request. And so the City Council does have the authority per state statute to pass an ordinance amendment that would designate the change, and then we would record it with the county. So with that, in your packet is Resolution 6 dash 28 dash 21 dash 24 that adopts Ordinance 232 relating to street names and property addresses. That ordinance renames a section of 62nd Street Northeast to 7th Street Northeast, starting at Minnesota State Highway 25, going up to and stopping right before the private entrance of 62nd Street. That's the private street that services the township properties. It would also change Mary Lutheran High School's address from 305 5th Street to 306 7th Street Northeast. The city did reach out to the Executive Director of Mary Lutheran High School, and while they were not able to attend the meeting tonight, they did state that they are in support of both the street name change and the address change. So with that, I am able to take any questions.
Any questions for Maggie? All right, hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve Resolution 6 dash 28 dash 21 dash 24, adopting Ordinance 232 relating to street names and property addresses.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And then this after goes to the county, then post office gets notified of this and...
Yep, so we will, the school is already aware that this will happen, but yep, once the county records it, then yep, we'll notify the post office of it, okay. So yeah, so we'll just, we'll take the appropriate steps.
How long from a Google aspect will it take? And I'm looking more for first responders, if they get called to 7th Street now, will you know that it's Mayor of the Board? Will your maps take, will they take you to the right place, Andy? Do you happen to know?
Well, I guess that's gonna be a question of...
Could you come, thank you, thanks Andy.
So I guess that'd be a question, I mean, it sounds like they've contacted Google about, you know, the changing, but
Yeah.
I think letting them know the address change and stuff like that, I mean, or that that street is renamed. I think, I don't know if somebody's got to reach out to, you know, Google or whatever on something like that to let them know so that...
Work with them and make sure, Megan, make sure they're aware, maybe in the next month or so, continue, if they have an emergency there, maybe continue to use the address 5th Street now so they know to get there and, you know, and we know it's switched over or your maps take you to the right. Let's just make sure we don't have a gap there.
Yeah, I'm not sure which map system you use, I know Google's already going to 7th, so...
Okay.
And I think too, once the address officially entered in the national database, then it...
Okay. I just don't want a gap there for more first responders.
Yeah, I'll just double check.
And you can let the county know, like...
Yeah, we have to record the ordinance with them, so...
I'm sure that that will go through the chains and that need be is going, you know, they're doing that through accounting and everything.
For redirecting.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Six B one, sale of the 1989 tanker.
All right, Mayor and Council, in 2020, the mayor fire department requested as part of the long-term plan to replace the current 1989 International Tanker. This was replaced with the 2021, or proposed to be replaced with the 2021 Freightliner Tanker. So these are on our long-term plan to be replaced about every 30 years or so. It was approved at the July 13th meeting, a City Council meeting, to purchase the new tanker, and since then it's been being built and scheduled to be delivered next month in July. So once the new tanker is delivered, the city needs to do a final determination as to what to do with the 1989 tanker. In the past, the city has talked about selling it. So one option that staff has looked into is selling the equipment through the auction process. The fire chief contacted Fahey Sales Auctioneers and Appraisers from Glencoe, Minnesota, for the auction, or for a cost to auction the tanker. The company charges a flat rate of 6% of the sale amount of the equipment and $40 per hour for label of removing graphics and detailing. So with that, staffers recommending working with Fahey Sales to auction the equipment of the 1989 tanker with a, for a flat rate of 6% of the sale of the equipment with fees of $40 per hour for labor. The fire chief is here to answer any questions, and I am here as well.
Have we sold other equipment through this auctioneer or auctions itself? We have sold through auctions. Maggie, any idea how many hours it'll take for the decal removals and things like that? We talk in 10 hours, an hour?
I'll speak, we're gonna attempt to take them off ourselves. I don't think it will take a whole lot, if not, they'll do it, but probably about an hour.
Oh, okay. So it's probably worthwhile just to have them do it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? I'll look for a motion for the fire department to sell the 1989 tanker with Fahey Sales Auctioneers out of Glencoe, a flat rate of 6% and equipment fees of $40 per hour for labor.
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Where does that money go?
Um, that is something I know another council member brought up today. So it would go back to the fire department, but I would need to do a little bit more research with the fire chief as far as, the tankers are usually split between the townships as well as the city, so we would have to figure that, figure out that revenue.
Talk to it, as far as our other trucks that we've sold, always went back into capital improvement.
Okay.
So then the township's got their ship.
Because then the townships pay 30% total.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So we're gonna, we're gonna sell it after we get the new one in, though. Okay.
Yeah.
I assume that.
Yep, I believe we were setting it up for August.
July 9th, we're going down to pick up the new truck. Auction is being, is in August, I don't know the exact date in August, but that's when they're doing a big consignment auction, so...
Any other questions or discussion, I'm sorry. All right, with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, that'll take City Council reports. Councilmember Lender, anything to report on?
Just that, the Watertown Mayor has a new community ed director. It's Amy Dimler, and congratulations to her. She's starting July 1st, and she's gonna be reaching out to the advisory committee and what's next sometime this summer.
Okay, wonderful. All right, Councilmember Whitmer, anything to report on?
Nothing.
Not at this time.
Nope.
And I have nothing to report on, I haven't been to a meeting. Sounds like our last City Council meeting. With that, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned. All right, we'll move, are you ready? Do you need a minute, Maggie, to get?
Um, I think I'm all right.
Sorry.
You can, I'm good. Yep.
One second, sorry. Okay, we will call the workshop meeting to order and start with number two of the American Rescue Act Plan Act.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is being brought to you this evening just to review information relating to the local fiscal recovery funds available that have been established under the American Rescue Plan Act. So as you know, last year, we did receive funding, COVID funding. And then, again, this year, we are in the process of receiving American Rescue Plan Act money. So at a future date, we will be, I will be bringing a resolution to the council to accept those funds if you choose to. So I do have a little bit of background detail in the packet, I won't go into too much detail about that, but we are getting, again, every day, a little bit more information as far as the allowable uses for these funds. Again, these are, they're similar to the previous COVID-19 funds, but do have a little bit more flexibility. So for our city, since we are under 50,000 in population, our allocation will be requested and provided from the Minnesota Management and Budget Office. And then, the final allocation numbers have not been officially posted yet, but our rough estimate, they're estimating it to be based on a city's 2019 census population multiplied by 105. So our census in 2019 estimated 2,266 people. So we are estimated to get around $237, oh my gosh, I apologize, $237,930. I, I'm not speaking well today. Um, so to receive the $237,930, the city will need to approve a resolution that includes accepting those funds. We would get the first half this year, we would then get the second half next year, and we have until December 31st, 2024, to spend the money. We do have to do reporting to MMB every quarter. And so that resolution would include the approval of following those guidelines. So there are, again, the money that we would do receive have to be directly related to COVID-19 response. So I'll go over kind of the summary of eligible uses. And I did provide you with a supporting document that provides it, provides the information in more detail. But essentially, it would be public health expenditures addressing negative economic impacts from COVID-19, replacing lost public sector revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers and necessary investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So some of these items, some of these categories, we don't really, don't really apply to the City of Mayor. But, but some do. And so with that, I did provide a little bit more information as to my recommendations. One would be looking at coordinating with other public entities again. That would include Carver County, I know they will be receiving money as well. They do not have any final programs set up at this time, but I did reach out and I believe that they will be doing business and residential support programs again, similar to last year. So I think that would, just keeping those in mind and coordinating with other public entities is something that I think would be beneficial, again, with these funds. Another eligible area that I think we should look into includes water and sewer projects. I believe our broadband system is pretty well established already, but the guidance right now for water and sewer projects includes constructing, improving, repairing water and wastewater plants, controlling sources of pollution, creating green infrastructure and protecting water bodies from pollution. So I think, again, we don't have final, final, I don't have final projects that I think that would really qualify, but I think it's worth discussing and researching any ideas that we have. I do think, you know, as you know, we've done a lot of work on our water treatment system this year, and we will have some upcoming projects within our wastewater treatment facility and system in the near future. So, um, so I did include a draft resolution that will be brought to the City Council at a future meeting. Again, this is just kind of informational tonight, and just for discussion purposes, asking for any follow-up questions and if there's anything you would like to, like staff to start researching at this time.
So I like the two we have up there, I think we should go after those. Carver County indicated they will be setting up a program, again, a grant loan program like the last time, or...
Um, I reached out to them, and they don't have anything formal set yet, because it has to go through the county board. But I know Carver County CDA will be proposing similar programs.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And we have to be eligible for other cities to have that management like they did for the last time.
Yeah, I would, I would think that they would agree to coordinate that again. Again, it would have to get, I think it's still very, when I talked to them, it was still very preliminary, so they don't have any formal plans yet, but I think they were interested in it again.
Is there something we could do to help the CDA sway them to do that, to make sure, you know, these smaller communities out in the western, or we just don't have the bandwidth to manage those, you know?
Right.
It's really helpful.
Um, I think we could probably, probably do like a letter of support, yeah, yep.
I'd like to see definitely some go to that again. Not more, but stay proactive like we did last time with marketing information, letting people know, or even if we know some people are behind on some water and sewer, let them know this program is out, you know, and have them apply, see if they're eligible.
Yeah, and this is just very preliminary recommendations, so...
The other thing I would personally like to see, or research a little bit, is some of the premium pay for essential workers. Mainly our first responders, along with staff.
Maggie, do you know if we don't take this money, does it go to another city? Does it stay at the county level?
Um, I believe it's similar to last time, so any money that we don't use will go to, will go back to either the county or the state to use. So last time, it went back to the county, anything the county didn't use went to the state to use. So I believe that'll probably be the same format. Okay.
First of all, I think it would be kind of an injustice to our taxpayers if we don't utilize that money for certain projects and stuff like that to help our community. And instead of, you know, giving it back, I think we should utilize it the best we can, you know, as much as that as we can, that, you know, would help our residents or taxpayers and stuff on things like that. I know other communities or other fire departments and stuff like that, I know on the last go-around of money, some departments purchased new radios for all their members, so every, each member had their own radio, they didn't have to share radios and stuff like that. Some other departments bought, you know, medical jumpsuits and stuff like that to use, second set of turnout gear and stuff like that. So those are some of my suggestions.
Yeah, let's research into that, what can be used, for those, it's certainly worth checking into. Any other items that we want Maggie to research into?
Off the top of my head.
All right, well, I mean, that gives you a start, Maggie. And of course, if anyone thinks of anything as we go on, certainly, you know, Maggie, reach out for. Let's see what we can do. All right, let's go to the fire station project update.
Okay, so at the last City Council meeting, the City Council asked staff to provide a project update on the fire station project. So I did include different details in your packet. I don't think I'm gonna go through all of it. I guess I would ask which parts you would want me to go through. So as you know, the project was approved in December of 2020. Let's see.
So some of this, Maggie, I asked to bring this back just because in the last five months, we've had a lot of things coming back and
Right.
Mr. Not Miss, should we do this, shouldn't we do that? And once this, I just want to make sure we have a good handle, everyone knows where we're, where we're at, what we've approved, where...
Yeah, and I...
During some of those conversations, you had sent me that Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
And I had some concerns on there, so I just want to make sure we're looking at things appropriately.
Yeah, so I'll do a quick summary, so, because we do have three new council members. So in 2016, the city did do a, did purchase 409 Shimcore Street for $184,000. The City Council approved the 2021 Fire Station Project. That project was solicited for and awarded to BCI Construction. That contract that we put together was, did include an 8% fee with Brunton Architects, and the city agreed to 3% project contingency in the amount of $80,000. The city did have civil engineer work through the city's engineering firm of $10,000. And then other project costs included the standard soil inspection testing, building permit review fees, and then fixtures, furniture and extra equipment. That amount was $150,591.58. So again, with the bidding process, we received 19 bids. The lowest bid was $2,675,069 from BCI. So, once the bidding was received, the City Council reviewed the base bid along with seven alternates. So alternate one was approved, that was including two additional bays on the east end of the building. Alternate, hold on. Alternate, hold on. Um, alternate two was rejected, so that was a different, using a different roof. Alternate three, uh, carpet and epoxy, that was approved, not to exceed ten thousand. Alternate four and five, those were rejected initially. That was to add in-floor heating uh, to the apparatus bays. And then alternate six, the upper cabinets in the kitchen was rejected. And alternate seven was approved to be rejected as, uh, um, and that was an automatic control system. So with that, the land, the land, the base construction bid, architect fees, contingencies, FFNE and other costs mentioned above, the project came in at approximately three million, seven hundred dollars. I provided a summary of the FFNE that was approved in December. That was this grid up here. So the total, again, was a hundred, about a hundred and fifty thousand. And then I also showed where we are to date with FFNE. So we have paid for several of those items. So we have about a, we spent about a hundred and five thousand. We have about forty-four thousand left. Um, and then a hundred and ninety-five remaining that we haven't allocated towards something. So if you look, most of it has, most of what was planned for has stayed the same. Some of it has either been consolidated in a different area or, um, removed. So I did include a summary of change orders, um, and where those change orders are getting paid out of. Um, so we have the in-floor heating. That's out of the fire relief fund. The generator is out of the fire capital fund. And then the extra epoxy plumbing change, sign change, and mezzanine change are out of the project contingency fund. I also included information on the, um, twenty-year bond that the city fi- uh, fi- has financed the project through. And that's in the amount of three hundred, I mean, three million, three hundred and seventy thousand. And then I provided a, right now, total approved in each fund category and how much we've spent. Um, and that's all come to council for approval. So I, I can go through, through any of this in more detail. But this is, I, I keep track of this on a spreadsheet and this was kind of the summary of that spreadsheet and kind of where we're at with the project.
Yes, well, like I said, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We know where we're at. Some of my concerns, so when we, at the last council meeting, when some change orders were coming, I asked to see where we're at, so I asked to see this spreadsheet. With, and I had some concerns on FFNE. Maybe, can we talk about that, um, Maggie?
Yep.
Do you have your spreadsheet? I, I was trying to find the one you sent.
I, I don't have, this is what I've taken from the spreadsheet.
So am I, and the way I understood that spreadsheet, um, well, one, so we had the FFNE for a hundred and fifty thousand. We said, okay, here are the items. Go ahead and, and kind of adj- I started getting concerned with some of the adjustments.
So this was the original that was passed with the estimates?
Right.
And then this is, uh,
I need that spreadsheet.
Okay, um, I can
You sent it to me. Chief One, and may- maybe you can just help me on this, just so I understand it. So chairs, chairs and tables, we wanted to get some. Then we needed more and we're going to spend more than we thought, and it came back to council and we said, uh, nope, here's your one fifty. You gotta, you gotta adjust things and figure out. Is it my understanding then that we did get those extra chairs and desks, but we cut some other items out?
We, yeah, so the money, the extra that we were asking for, so we, we changed that, um, quantity of stuff to meet what was left in FFNE, so we
And in the one fifty?
Yes.
Yeah, so they did reduce the number of chairs, desks, and tables that they were going to purchase. Um,
But somewhere we cut out a gear washer?
There
What was the other?
There was a gear, I think we were going to purchase an extra gear dryer.
Oh, was it dryer?
Mm-hmm.
Maggie, all right. All right, let me try to find it. This is where I wanted to just make sure we're all on the same page.
I can go send it.
Yeah, could you please? So is my understanding, and this is a conversation that I had with Maggie, and maybe it's
So in that little, on the top section there, it doesn't look like there's anything budgeted for chairs, desks, and tables. Is that because you were planning to use the existing? And then?
We were, uh, originally going to, um, fund all the chairs, desks, and tables from, um, donation from the baseball club. And as we went through and got numbers more, uh, I should say more updated numbers on everything, there ended up being, um, you know, some money left in the FFNE, so then we purchased what we could of those tables and chairs from the FFNE budget.
That's where I was concerned. That's where I was concerned. It was my assumption, we decided, it was decided, let's buy more chairs and ta- tables and then cut out some things. And it was my understanding, we cut out the ga- a gear dryer and the exterior camera for weather watch.
So a couple of those things, um, the camera for the weather watch, in talking with the, um, security company or whatever that did would do, um, you know, uh, videos and, or, you know, the cameras and stuff like that. He, he said, you aren't going to be able to see what you want with that.
Okay.
He made a suggestion that it wasn't going to be worth it.
Thank you.
So that would be
That's a clarification. I was just confused when it, it appeared to me on the information I was getting that we bought chairs and tables, but cut out a gear dryer and a camera, which are safety item, I mean, those are bigger items to me.
The other, the other thing, the gear dryer, so we did purchase a, um, a gear washer, so we'll now have two gear washers. I can only wash about two sets of gear in each one. The dryer that we do have, I can dry four sets of gear on. So so it will dry what I can wash at the same
Perfect. Nope, that, that answers my question. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's perfect then. And that answers everything for me. That gets, I think we're all on the same page. I mean, that's, I think periodically, maybe in another six weeks, we do this again, Meg, just to make sure we can get an overview on this as we progress through it. I think it's good for everyone to see these.
I think the written timeline hopefully was helpful for the three new council members to kind of just see the progression of, um, timing.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks.
And remind me what
Yeah.
we did.
Yeah, right. So, okay, that's perfect for me unless anyone else has more that they want on this.
Nope.
All right, then, um, we can move to the next one, the, uh, change request for painting.
Okay, so, um, so at the previous council meeting, um, the city council did discuss a request change order for interior painting of the station. Um, so while it was rejected, there was discussion about bringing it back to a workshop for further discussion. Uh, so that change request includes adding painting to the apparatus bays, walls, and ceilings. The recommendation at the June fourteenth meeting was to pay it, it out of the contingency fund. That project cost for the painting change is forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So that would have brought the contingency fund down to about seven thousand dollars, more or less. Um, so that was rejected. One discussion or one recommendation for consideration is paying it out of the fire ca- the fire capital fund. Again, that's, I, I'm available to answer any questions, but that is, it is looking at the capital or the long-term plan. Um, it would be able to handle, uh, this amount, um, for this change order um, without affecting any future long-term projects. So I think with the fire chief here, with the council here, um, that's, that's one other option I can think of for if, if we aren't paying out a contingency fund, paying it out of the capital reserve fund. Um, otherwise, I, I'm looking for direction as far as are we, whether to, or not to keep considering this as an option or just move.
So typically, these things I, I, we don't bring back to council when they, we voted on, we get it failed, it failed motion, but we thought it'd be worth having a discussion if, if someone wants to rediscuss this and possibly look for a different way to pay for it versus the contingency. I, I thought it was worth bringing back to at least have some discussion if, if we relook at it. I think I've made it clear where I stand on it, um, at the last meeting, that I'm opposed, no matter what fund it comes. I don't think we should be spending the forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, no matter what I think we've gotten. We've spent enough on the station. It's still money, taxpayers' money, no matter where it comes from. And I'm opposed to it either way, but, um, we can certainly have that conversation if people want to see it come back to council.
So if we take it from the fire capital fund, and let's say we don't spend any more contingency, can we replace the money in the fire capital fund with the contingency money?
My understanding is that money stays with the project, and so that money would, anything that's left over would go towards paying the bond. Which would, I, I mean, if you look at it, the levy for, so let's, we have to levy for capital bond payments. So for one year, if we do have remaining money, we wouldn't levy for that money. So there is the opportunity to, I guess, not to keep our, I, I think our long-term goal has always been to keep our tax rate stable. And so, um, I don't know, we would have to discuss that at budget time, what that would mean. It doesn't mean, I mean, there is a possibility that the capital fund levy could be increased. Uh, I, I just don't know right at this moment, but, um,
And I'm not saying in the next couple of years I wouldn't be opposed to doing this. Once we find out, we know in our long term, our tax rate's going to start increasing in the next two years, up considerable amount. I don't think we should be spending it now. I think we had it set. That's my view on it. Um, I understand painting it now has some advantages, but you can still paint a wall even when the, the bays are finished. Um, in ten years from now, we're going to have to repaint them, so we're going to figure out a way to repaint them and protect the floor and do all, so I, I, I get it's easier to do it now, but, um, from a financial standpoint, I just, I can't support it. Our tax rates in the next couple of years, based on our plan, are going to jump up significantly, significantly.
So Maggie, can we use some of the, what do they call it, COVID money?
No.
Investing in the building?
Uh-uh. I, I don't think that that would qualify. Painting the fire station, I don't think would, is what I would consider falling in any of those categories unless
I mean, what about putting it in the capital?
You, you can't use that money to
Does that's a tax-based?
Well, that funding is audited and it, it, it cannot just go into funds for future projects. It has to be spent in the moment and it has to be within specific guidelines. So it can't, like, I think while there is one category that says lost revenue, I don't think that this is, I don't think this would qualify in that category, and I can't think of any other category unless you can think of where it would fit in there. Huh?
Maintaining?
Maintaining. Yeah, but those facilities are related. Are you, I, I know that there's wastewater and water facilities, but not fire, not public buildings.
Look into it. I mean, if we can, it's, it's an option. I don't know how we say we're maintaining a building we haven't built during the pandemic, but
Yeah, I think we just, again, have, I can look into it. I just don't think, I think it has to be, again, within the guidelines and and guidelines are coming, I mean, they're changing every week, so maybe something will change, but as far as what I've read, I, I don't see it fitting, but
Is the fire department defined as a special purpose unit of government?
So
That's an eligible transfer. I mean, I, I don't know. I guess I don't know enough about what they're, what the guidelines are going to be, but I would think somehow we could, um, maybe.
I, I, again, I can look, I can do research, um, into it. I, I think too politically, like, to use those funds, like, I, I think you just have to be careful, like, what you're using them for, because, again, they're that's money that's being given to local governments related to COVID nineteen, so
What's the risk? On that, cares mo- money, we decide, and not even, same for painting, same for something else, uh, turnout gear.
Right.
Buy then another set of turnout gear, turn it in then, and, and they say, nope, sorry, the risks, and we just get stuck with the bill. We've already paid for it and we, I mean, that's the risk, right?
Probably, yes.
So we'd have to do some, I mean, we'd have to
I would say
Talk to someone on, on any of this stuff. We're going to do it to make sure
Right.
So we're not getting ourselves
Was that what we had to do with the last one, is we had to like, kind of send in what, how we did it?
Yeah, similar to last time. It has to come to council for any expenditures to be approved, and then, uh, yes, we do a, this time, and we'll do a quarterly report with Minnesota.
Last time, we were pretty clear-cut on what, you know, we had to upgrade for zooming in on our AV. We went all hands free. Um, so we didn't have to touch anything. They were pretty clear-cut, I think, on those.
But our city auditor will audit it, what, with our regular audit, so.
Okay, well, let's continue to look into that, but
Right.
On this, is this still something we want to bring back and try to get it out of a, a general, uh, fund or a reserve fund?
Maggie?
I have a few comments. Um, I mean, first of all, I, I think everybody could agree with me that it should be painted. It's going to look, you know, it, without being painted, it looks unfinished. You know, and people go, why, you know, why didn't you finish it type of thing? It'll be much brighter and everything in there, and I feel it should be finished. It's going to look the best. And I think you all can agree with me that it is going to cost much less to do it now than it is going to be later because of, um, not having to cover the floor, tape everything off near as much. Right now, they can go in there, spray it all off, and they're done. So it's going to cost a lot less now than it will in the future. So in thinking of, you know, um, taxpayers, I think it's, you know, by doing it later, it's more expensive for them. Why didn't you do it right away, you know, type of thing? Um, why did it? Why did it, why did you wait? And it costs now ten thousand dollars more to paint it now, you know, why didn't you do it then? That's some of my thoughts. Other things, you know, if you decide to take it out of the capital improvement fund, um... So there's items in there, like I suggested, you know, purchasing radios. We've got in our capital improvement fund for the next, um, you know, how many years now? If we would get those radios covered, you know, through that CARES Act or, um, you know, turnout gear or something like that out of there that isn't pulling from our capital improvement fund, um, you know, that helps as well.
A lot of unknowns, and I, I won't make a decision on ifs on some of those, so they're unknowns. And, yeah, building might look nicer if it was painted. I, I think there's, I, I think the way, when you talk about it, we act like there's gonna be five hundred people walking through this building a day, there's not. And then most people who come into it are gonna be up front, who won't be in the Bay Area. So I just wanna make sure we're not making it sound like this is a building that's open to the public and people are coming to, like, a mall or something, that kind of a thing. But, um, and again, I think we talked about that at the last meeting, why you wanted to get it painted. I think we're at the point now is it failed. And I was willing to bring it back against, if council, it wants to come back again, whatever fund it's gonna be in. And, like I said, I'm not hearing anyone say that to bring it back to council and let's take that fund and do it. I wanna at least have the conversation, you know, from the meeting that we had last time. And, and again, typically, I don't, I won't do that, once it, when it fails, it fails, that's just the decision.
So Maggie, can you tell me what the hundred and eighty-four thousand on the miscellaneous fund is from up a few pages? I'm, I'm trying to understand how we agreed to a bid and then it looks like we've got thirty-three, sorry. Yep, right there, that last one, miscellaneous funds, a hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Oh, that's the, uh, that's, it's just, I just put that in there, that's when we bought the, the land.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, it's a little misleading, the one eighty-four, because the original property for a new fire station was purchased long before my time. And then it was, we kinda did a swap. At the same time, we sold the lot to Casey's at the, around the same time we purchased the new lot. And it worked out in our favor that the purchase lot for Casey's was more than what we were purchasing the new lot. So it was technically kind of a wash in, in terms of, if you were to look at it, it really is not an additional hundred and eighty-four thousand back in twenty sixteen because there was...
Yeah, and I just included, I, I was just, I think at a previous council meeting, it was, just to be transparent, they just... I get that it's a wash.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it was just asked to keep that...
Yeah, that was kind of, the whole thought it worked out, it was like, it was a perfect scenario that worked out, that allowed for another commercial business to, to come into town. At the same time, we still were allowing for a space for a new fire station at the time.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's mostly just informational that...
That's just more to the history of...
Right.
I think we should bring it back for a revote out of the fire capital fund. Because I think it is better off done now than later. I mean, I know we can't factor in the sale of the old building and different things like that, but I think it, I think it pays to take another look at it.
I'd agree with that.
All right.
I'd like to, I'd like to bring it up again, I'd like to also investigate if there's any possibility to use some of that, what do you call it? Not COVID money, but...
CARES.
CARES.
CARES money?
All right.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know when we received the first chunk, but...
Yeah, 'cause like Andy said, if we can purchase the radios and stuff with those funds, that frees up more money potentially, potentially to do...
Better be sure that, if you're spending it, you better be sure it's gonna get reimbursed.
Well, I thought we were, like, had to make a decision at the last meeting because it had to be painted, like, then. Right, 'cause I thought we had talked about waiting down the road.
I think we decided to vote on it, I think we had decided to vote on it.
Well, why don't you research it, see what timing is? We have enough that says, let's bring it back, so...
Yeah, yeah, I'll...
Bring it back for the next council meeting and talk, uh, with BCI on the timelines and, and what fund you think would be appropriate to come out of.
Yeah, I'll research the ARPA money. Again, that's, I just wanna make you aware that that's, that's, uh, three years that you have to use that money. So I think as we dive into it a little bit more, we're gonna have to set priorities. But, again, I will see if that's something that is allowable at least, so... Wait, what?
Well, I mean...
You gotta come on the microphone, please.
If you bought the radios, as you said, you bought radios, so do they know, say right away, no? Or is this ten years down the line, they say, no, that wasn't good, or what?
No, no, we get audited every year, so we will...
The auditor decides if it's good or not, or...
They have to follow the guidelines, so they have to, they audit our invoices and what we've used the money on and they will let us know if any of it was appropriate.
So it'll be next year?
Right.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
All right, you're good with that then, Maggie?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that's, oh, golf carts.
Um, so this is just a quick item, I'm looking for guidance on this.
Thanks, guys.
So ever since we did our amendment to the recreational vehicle ordinance, um, sorry, that's not golf carts. We, we now allow for class two ATVs. Since then, there have been often on some residents calling and asking for clarifications on whether golf carts are approved, or are an approved recreational vehicle that can be used within city limits. So with some research, um, it would involve a code amendment to our recreational vehicle ordinance. If we were wanting to consider this, um, we would have to actually do a permitting process with golf carts. So whether, um, so that would be an administrative permitting that we, we would have to do here at city hall. So I'm just looking for guidance. I, I did look at other Carver County city code, codes on golf carts to see if they allow them. So Victoria allows them, Watertown doesn't, Norwood America allows them, Carver doesn't. So I did ask the communities that do have them if they've had any issues and they said that they have not. But, um, again, there's just... Uh, yeah, they do, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, those are, that is one thing...
Have golf carts, of course.
Those are things to consider, is, you know, cities that have golf carts. But, um, this was something that a few residents had asked me to at least have a discussion with the city council on. And so I'm looking for guidance, if this is something we even wanna consider.
When people have called and said our golf cart's included your, what's your answer to that?
No.
Okay.
Right.
And when you say, is this a couple of phone calls, two or three people, or is this...
It's just been over, it's not a hundred, it's just, uh, I just had, ever since our, we passed the other ordinance, it was kind of, I think, kind of slipping now into, will you approve that, will you consider this kind of thing, and...
And I'm only asking that 'cause I haven't had anyone ask me about it, and I had a lot of people ask me about UTVs.
What's the cost for the permits roughly at these...
It's just set at, it's set at what you want it to be, I think I've heard five dollars, I've heard fifteen.
Is it a hassle for you girls, for city staff, to issue?
I mean, I mean, I think the only thing is, is...
No, it's a very honest answer.
Well, I don't know, I mean...
Very honest question.
I don't know what you, you know, you need your birth certificate or what, you know, to try and...
Yeah, we would have to, I guess, establish, again, the application, what's required to make that. We would have to research it more, what is required with these permits, um, I just know that it's a permit.
One example is we used to do dog licenses and it was really hard to pu- I don't know, police it. And then we tried to do the universal, or like, the lifetime of it, just 'cause we wanted people to do it, but the, the level of participation was very low. So that's why I think we went away from having that at all. So this would probably be a very similar thing. And then our deputy would have to figure out if they have, it's permitted.
Right, so right now...
Like, how does that logistically work?
And don't the ATVs have to have lights and signals and all of that?
Well, they're registered through, um, the DMV, um, just like a car.
But isn't that a requirement, is to have, you gotta have lights?
Yeah, they have to be a specific...
Right, so golf carts different and it doesn't have to be licensed through the DMV, so that's why we'd have to require a permit to allow them, because they don't, there isn't a way to...
Regulate.
Regulate it, because they don't have, like, a license plate. Like, we have a sticker, like, if you get a boat, you have to have the boating sticker. It's the same for UTVs, ATVs, you have to, it has to be registered, so it's by an owner, or golf carts...
You can register it and it doesn't make it street legal, 'cause it doesn't have a lighting and a...
You don't have to have those things, you can use hand signals, like, to make them street legal.
To turn, but you have to have lights.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they do have lights, but they don't have to have turn signals.
Right.
Yeah, headlights and taillights.
Yeah.
Most golf carts do now.
I think my view on this is, if we've only had a few phone calls and the amount of money it costs to change an ordinance, and we just changed it a year and a half ago and we didn't have anyone come in and mention golf cart, I...
No, we changed it this year.
It was in December.
It was this year, I mean, it hasn't even been a year.
Right.
Okay, so less than a year ago, we changed it and no one brought up, I, you know, if, if we hear more talk about it or social media starts lighting up or someone wants to get a petition together, then absolutely, but, like I said, the amount of money it costs to change the ordinances, I, I would say we don't do it right now. I haven't had anyone talk to me, I'd like, you know...
I mean, I've, I've...
I've never even had anyone mention, I've never even seen a golf cart out.
It's 'cause mine's broken. I've had one, but I know Howard Lake has a, they have a golf course. And I think they have a, they have a sticker or something that they put on them and then...
I'd certainly see if you have a golf course in town, if you're in Victoria.
Yeah, I just, I agree, like...
I, I wouldn't do anything right now, it's my thoughts, but...
Yeah, let's see if there's more interest, I agree with Mike, and then we can talk about it again.
And we just changed it and we had no one, I didn't hear anything about it.
Right.
Sounds good.
All right, all right, with that, we'll adjourn.